And it goes away if it's not, if it's not equitable, I can tell you, it won't come back again, you know, it wouldn't be in the next contract. But it is a five-year contract, so, I mean, if we can get it through, let's get it through and let's, you know, get this thing resolved.
We're just trying to think it through before.
I totally understand that. But, yeah, but I just want to make sure that it is something that's not written in stone. It's this contract. Thank you.
Thank you much.
No, I wasn't advocating that, Mark.
I know you weren't.
I did have a question from a county employee, and you really have to think about what some of them say.
I understand.
And they say, you know, they say they realize that the sheriff's department will get a different pay scale, because they realize that their, you know, their risks were greater.
Right.
We all know that. We appreciate what you do. But their comment was, why is this being taken up without the rest of the county employees getting it? Because this has nothing to do with the risk of that.
Right.
This is just retirement. And that was their concern. And Michigan brought this up, just don't even blame other people to think about it.
Well, no, I'm sure that it has. We have the answer to it in the public as well, and I'm comfortable answering to it. I mean, we contribute to our disability, we do have a unique set of circumstances. We're no better than anybody in this room or any county employee. We're different. You know, it's just like firefighters. There are no better than anyone. It's just a different set of circumstances. I had a guy the other day say, "Well, police, you're like number 12 in risk of employment of getting killed in the line of duty. More fishermen are killed." Yeah, well, they're pulled overboard because they got their boot hooked in a net. Some lunatic didn't walk into a restaurant and shoot him point-blank in the head. And for the record, I do know one of the deputies extremely well, and it was extremely, it's extremely hard on me. Not that that's happening everywhere, but it is different. It's a different time, but, and it's a different set of circumstance. And that's what I'm saying. If drop would help, we're getting long in the tooth at the sheriff's office. If you look, we have a lot of 30-plus, 36-plus. We're not getting the, we don't have young kids. And that's something, if we're truly going to look at the health of this county down the road, and I do, I look at the department, because that's what I worry about, the men and women. That's why I'm in the position I am with the FOP. I advocate for the men and women of the sheriff's office and other departments, because I see what they've gone through, you know, doing it for this, like I said, 27 and a half years this year. It is a situation where we're getting a very, we haven't had that turnover at the sheriff's office. People don't leave. They're getting older. We've got to do something, and if drop will help move 20 guys out, move 20 young people in, you give up those senior salaries, and you hire 20 deputies with those salaries. Do you see what I mean? If we can move things along, I think that's huge, because we do, we have a lot of 30-something deputies. I mean, no offense, but you don't want me coming to your house fighting some 18-year-old when he's trying to get in. I'm getting old and tired. We need those young guys out there that are out there hustling and doing, the young men and women that can get out and get it. We don't need a bunch of 55-year-olds working the road in Wycomico County. That's crazy. That's not even good, that's not even good sense with what's going on in society right now. And that's what we're going to end up with. I mean, we have a very senior department, and it's because of things that had happened in the past for a lot of reasons. And everybody, you know, we all have our own opinion on it. But I just think anything we can do to help move things along with retirement and with recruiting and retention of quality employees, we need to do for the sake of the county. I'm not leaving here. I'm staying when I retire. So you guys get to see me for a while. But I like it here. But it's, it's just, I think we've got to do something. And, you know, the sheriff spoke to it as well. It's, you know, if drop's the only thing hanging this up, you have my word, I'll pass it to the next president. The next contract, you just get rid of it. You know, but if we can get this thing through and move it on, I totally understand the research. We need to do it sooner than later, because we do not want to file an impasse. And that's, I'm going to start feeling pressure from the membership to do that, which means we end up in court in arbitration. And if we end up in arbitration, it can be six figures in legal fees. And as you, if you guys don't know, the losing side pays all the legal fees. And this contract was presented to us, the FOP asked for nothing. This is what was presented to us. So if this does go to court, this is what was presented.
What do you mean by that?
It was presented by the, we were offered a contract by the county executive. We did not counter. We considered it. It was a fair contract, and we took it. It's longer than we anticipated, but we think Mr. Culver was very fair in his offer. We did not like the five-year aspect of the contract. That's unheard of. But we took it. So I'm not an attorney, but I have to believe if we went to court, and this is what was offered to us, and that's all we're asking for in court, that's kind of silly.
Was the drop program proposed by?
Yes.
By the executive?
And the salary increase proposed by the executive?
They actually, it was negotiated, because they asked.
Can't hear you. Sorry.
Actually, the drop program was negotiated. They asked for a buyback, a pension buyback in the negotiation, so.
Well, that was something that was carried over from the last contract. The buyback for people who, like me, when I was hired, I was told there was no retirement, when actually there was here in Wycomico County.
Right.
And it's not just me, it's multiple deputies.
And just to clarify, Kevin Karpinski, the FOP did have a proposal, and there were a lot of things that were rejected in that proposal. And I think what Mr. Fisher's saying is that the county executive came back with what he viewed to be a fair proposal. And because it was, felt that it was a fair proposal, there was no further negotiations that the county was willing, county executive's office was willing to do. In terms of shortening the duration of the agreement or changing some of the other material terms, it was just felt that that was, it was a reasonable proposal that the county executive had made, and that there was no room for further negotiation as it relates to those terms.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Yes, thank you.
Wayne, I might have a question for you, I would guess, or maybe Mr. Karpinski. How were things changed in reference to Social Security? Because I do remember that as having been a huge issue, that once Social Security kicked in, retirement benefits would be, would stop.
Yeah, that's the last contract. You're talking about the death and disability benefit. And the last contract, when that disability benefit was negotiated and the trust was established, it was established in a manner that the payments from that trust would be tax-free. Correctamundo.
Yeah.
They would be treated, yeah, this gets real technical, so I'll let Michelle explain it.
But the benefits were to be extended. There was a cutoff date based on the age of the Social Security, when Social Security was kicking in. Is that not correct?
Oh, you're talking about the $15,000 offset? Yeah, the $15,000 offset is being eliminated if this contract is ratified.
But the $15,000 was in reference to second.
Secondary employment. Secondary employment.
Right. Are you saying that that is now no longer?
If this contract is ratified, that would go away.
That would go away. So that, just so that the council's clear on this, I mean, and the public, I mean, could you explain the before and after of that impact, please?
I'll let Michelle do that.
Michelle.
Before and after?
Yes. Other than what we had before and what we're now.
Okay, before, which we have no claims yet on the disability, accidental disability. If they got, had secondary employment, we would, $15,000 would offset that 66.67% of what they would receive for a disability benefit.
So if they had another, if they had another job?
Yes.
And they, up to $15,000 of income from that second job be subtracted?
Which is, yes. And that would have been equivalent to like a minimum wage.
Michelle, you say we have no claims yet, but they can go back four years, correct? The 2012?
Well, that was the, yes.
For a claim?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have it yet, but they can still go back.
But that was for when the last contract.
Why did the, why did the, why did the executive?
No, there was no look back.
There was no look, no.
There was no look back.
But the benefit is effective 2012.
Right. But there was no look back on the benefit.
It was effective 2012.
So if there was any qualifying event, it would have been only a prospective event. There was no look back. There was no two-year look back.
I don't understand. If I was disabled but didn't claim disability in 2013, I couldn't go back to 2013 today and say I was disabled in 2013?
There's a time period, there's a time period provided for in the trust document for making your disability claim. When we, when we agreed to the disability benefit in the last contract, we stipulated that there would be no look-back period from the date of inception. So in other words, the date that the contract took effect, we precluded a deputy's ability to say, "Well, hey, wait a minute, I was disabled back in 2009, and I'd like to bring that forward now." It was only provided that a prospective event could trigger a disability claim. And I know that there are some requirements inside that benefit document that stipulate how that claim would be made, and there are time periods involved. I just, I don't recall what they are technically.
Why was that, why was that section deleted?
What section?
In reference to the $15,000?
It's a matter of financial, it's just a matter of financial negotiation, and the county considered the potential cost of giving that up and determined that it was in the county's best interest to offer that, since it had been requested, within the context of the financial arrangements that were being considered.
But I, I was under the impression that this was, would have been an initiative on the part of the county, not on the part of the FOP, striking that clause.
No, that doesn't benefit the county. It benefits deputies.
I understand it. I understand who it benefits. But I was under the impression that this was the proposal that was presented to the FOP.
They actually requested that, that was part of their proposal to us, to eliminate that $15,000.
It was in response to their initial requests.
Yes.
They had a series of requests that they presented to us in our first meeting. Those requests were then considered, and county executive Culver came back with a proposal that included some, didn't include many.
Now, with the, on another section where it references that a member who commences receiving AD benefits payments during the period of the subsection which does not attain his or her Social Security retirement age shall continue to receive such payments. Is this, is this new, or is this?
That was in the prior agreement.
That was in the prior agreement as well?
Yes. The only thing new in that agreement as far as disability is striking the $15,000.
Okay. Anybody? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much, Michelle. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the council in reference to the agreement? Okay, all right. That being done, we have poultry, the poultry legislation that we wanted to review. We have on, council has in its brief book, what we have is sort of a rough draft, a very rough draft, of what the council could expect to see as far as any type of legislation in reference to the poultry houses. We also have, we also have examples of legislation from Acomet County, which includes some of the, some of the work that was done in Somerset County as well. And I would assume the council has had a chance to review this. We're just trying to see what direction we think we should head, and try to come to some resolution in regard to the poultry houses on Wycomico County. As everybody knows, the big, the primary issue is the fact that you have extremely large complexes being developed, which has created a lot of concern among the community. As I understand, the large complexes have been put into place for a number of reasons, one being the fact that it's now becoming less cost-efficient to put smaller units in there, simply because of what the new regulations are, environmental regulations are, with storm order management, et cetera. So to help offset that, the larger farms have been proposed. In addition, something that I found out that sort of surprised me is that the larger houses don't necessarily mean more chickens. Larger houses are being built simply because the chickens are being afforded more room, and that reduces the amount of disease that, potential for disease. And especially when they're transitioning from, to not using antibiotics, just to getting away from antibiotics, the chickens are then more susceptible to disease, because they're not taking antibiotics, and therefore they need more room as far as, you know, their environment. I'm not saying that every large chicken house isn't going to have more chickens, because I haven't evaluated those numbers yet, and I can't speak one way or the other. But those are some of the arguments that have been presented. Either way, we're looking for some direction, and the public's looking for some direction on the part of the council, as far as how we'd like to address the concerns with these poultry houses. And I think anybody would agree that what Wycomico County has in place right now is very inadequate, and as the fact, as Mr. Lennox has said before, it's to explain what Wycomico County's regulations are in the poultry houses in Wycomico County, it's one sentence. And that is that there's a restriction of 100 feet and nothing more. So that being in mind, you have before you, again, these draft regulations. And for the most part, what you're looking at, it's a combination of several regulations, but we're trying to focus primarily on what the zoning regulations are and how we might want to address those concerns.
Good start, Mr. Council President. You met with some people last week who gave you this information. Would you go through the process of how you received the information?
Well, the, I've had discussions with representatives from Somerset County, because they've already gone through this whole process, and I'm trying not to reinvent the wheel, if it fits for our county as well. Last Friday, the chairman of the Acomet County, Chairman Wolf, actually came to Salisbury and met, and we spoke for about, we spoke for about 45 minutes on what the processes had been that they had gone through. And he actually came up with a document that he wanted to hand personally, so that we could, you know, have that at our disposal as well, and we have copies of that document. It's a study from the University of Georgia. So we've had good input from Somerset County, and we've had good input from Acomet County as well, two counties that were intensely involved in it.
I guess my suggestion, and I've mentioned it to you before, John, is that if we do go through with any sort of legislation like this, that we might want to consider tying it to the tier map bill. I think a lot of the concern that, I know a couple folks in this room have about these operations, is that they're near more residential developments, you know, subdivisions. And the tier map, tier three is where that stuff is supposed to be located. It doesn't make sense necessarily to enact these regulations, you know, for areas of the county where subdivisions aren't supposed to be happening, you know, out in, like, you know, I think I used the example, Apple Road, you know, that's, just the population density isn't out there that there is necessarily in what would turn out to be tier three, you know, once we get that done. So, you know, I'm not sure how I feel about either of these pieces of legislation. You know, I mean, ag land is ag land, but some ag land is in tier three, and that's the land that's frankly closest to Salisbury. So I don't know that these necessarily need to be county-wide, but maybe they can be restricted by the tiers, if that's what we do, because that's where the real concern seems to be.
I think, we've had that discussion before. I think that's an excellent, an excellent point. You're saying that these regulations wouldn't necessarily apply to tier four, simply because tier four is agriculture?
I mean, that's, that's not, I mean, yeah, there's not, under the tier map, there's not really supposed to be much development out there. And so, you know, this is, this is, these are designed to kind of protect, you know, the neighbors of these places out there.
Right.
I mean, I mean, that's what ag land is supposed to be zoned by. I mean, we are a right-to-farm area, but, you know, there is substantial development in some parts of ag land now, and that's, that's why there's this conflict that we're seeing now. So as much as we can limit the burden of the county government on ag production in this county, I would certainly hope we would do that.
Yes, Councilman Hall.
I assume that planning and zoning will come up with the regulations that we ultimately recommend from this council? So it will be a good idea that if planning and zoning were at our hearings or open work sessions?
We're trying to make that, we've made that request to the executive, and planning and zoning was told not to come to the work session with the county council. I'm still confused by that, Bob, because the director of planning and zoning is at your disposal and ours as well. He's paid by taxpayer dollars, as we all are, and we're simply trying to have an open work session in public to review the pros and cons of this legislation. And it ties our hands if we don't have a member of our own staff here to assist us with this, with this process.
I'm here as a learning section today. As I've told you, you know, I expect to get three different departments down.
We can't hear you, Bob.
I can't hear half of you. It's okay, Joe.
The public can't hear you, Bob.
Well, then I'll just be quiet until you make a decision. I'd like to. I don't know how many people know this. Wycomico County has a right to farm. Now, two weeks ago, we had dozens of people stand up to that podium, like, that live in the rural areas outside of Salisbury. And I presume they were homeowners. I'd like to read something. Wycomico County recognizes and supports, this is from the Right to Farm law. Wycomico County recognizes and supports right farm agricultural lands in a manner consistent to generally accept that agricultural management practices residences of property on or near agricultural land should be prepared to accept that inconveniences or discomfort associated with agricultural operations, including but not limited to noise, odors, flies, fumes, dust, operation of machinery of any kind during any 24-hour period, including aircraft, vibration, storage and disposal of manure, and the application by spraying or otherwise chemical fertilizer, solv, discomforts associated with such agricultural operations should not be considered being interference with any reasonable use of the joint and blank. Now, this goes on and on. Purpose behind this, everybody that's bought property in Wycomico County has handed this and it's signed, it's part of their settlement package. They know when that comes along. I've read the DPI papers, you know, I know that poultry companies have said that we should do some setbacks or find us going to setbacks possibly. I kind of think maybe all this ought to be part of our Right to Farm bill, because this is what it is, it's farming. Instead of doing zoning.
You think what should be part of that?
What we're getting ready to approach here, instead of maybe doing legislation. Legislation has already been done, basically.
Okay.
Anyway, there's also another, I'm trying to find this, this thing, this is very complicated. But anyway.
Are you suggesting that instead of a separate bill that we do, that we bring the Right to Farm Act in and amend that?
That's what I'm suggesting. I.
There's a great big wooden boat out there.
I think that, there's also a point in there, I'm trying to find it. You know, anybody that has a complaint about odor or dust, they're allowed to call the health department, trying to go out and check. It's in this law. Maybe, maybe that's the way we need to go, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel here. They've already got a board set up, and we talked about that, trying to set up a number of people to, let's see, Wycomico County Farm Bureau, Realtors, Soil Conservation, Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, Poultry Industry, Chamber of Commerce, homeowners associations are allowed to be a part of it. I think maybe that's the way we should go, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel here.
Well, I think what you're talking about, Joe, is actually, when you're talking about the Right to Farm Act, I think what you're referencing more than anything is ordinances that might be health-related, health-related ordinances. And what we're proposing to do is not in that general direction at all. What we're looking at is zoning regulations, and that is.
I don't know, I don't know that, John, and that could be part of this. I mean, they put it in here when they thought they wanted to put it in here.
I think it's a matter of.
It's a recognition that agriculture is the largest industry in Wycomico County, and it adds many positive benefits. It's declared a policy of the county to preserve, protect, encourage, and develop and improve this agricultural land in production of food and agricultural products. You know, we can, we can insert anything in the Right to Farm program that we want to, it's not limited to just being about health.
Rachel, would you have any input on that? This is sort of coming out of left field, but, you know, would you have any?
And I apologize for that, because I just thought about that back twenty minutes.
I actually think it's an interesting.
It's a reasonable suggestion.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting concept, and we could even possibly incorporate that into the poultry section of our code. I'd have to look into it a little more to give any long-term, but it certainly sounds like an interesting idea.
I mean, or even doing something like spelling out in there.
What they have in the right form. Yeah, we could, we could mirror it, we could mirror the language.
Well, I just opened this up and started reading it, and I said, why should we try to read about the wheel? It's about the Right to Farm Act.
Well, it's a matter of semantics. Either we pass a bill that talks about zoning regulations, which would have to then go, I somehow or other thing would have to be implemented in the code, I'm not quite sure.
Yes, it would.
So it would, there would have, and the bill would implement it in the proper code, is that not correct?
Something like, for instance, what we dealt with a little while ago, the National Electrical Code. They, the code, our code states that, when you open it up to the electrical standards for Wycomico County, it states Wycomico County uses the current version of the National Electrical Code. We could do a, you know, what Joe's talking about, we could possibly do a, just a reference in the code to say that we follow this right-to-farm, you know, mandate or whatever Joe's reading from.
Well, I know that we've had a discussion before, and initially, this was, this legislation was being considered as to whether or not it could be a resolution. And then the discussion was, from legal advice, that it would have to be a bill. So I really would like to know the best way to approach this.
Sure. Our, the reason for that is because our current code specifically states that the setback is 100 feet, and, you know, if you want something that is going to be, if you want something that is going to possibly change that, you can't, you have to reference it in that, but you can't have our, have our legislation, our code saying it's 100 feet, and then somehow try to require a different amount of, a different percentage of setback or something by, through a different version. Now, if you wanted to do something other than setbacks, I mean, it seems to me as though it should be included in the code, because the code is where people look to figure out what they need to do. But.
Again, again, I think that Mr. Lennox could give us a very good idea of what the best approach is, whether we're, you know, whether we're dealing with codes, whether we're dealing with bills, resolutions, or whether we're dealing with the Right to Farm Act. We need clarification as far as.
For simplification, resolutions are intended for more short-term nature things, like, you know, something that's, legislative bills are intended for things that are longstanding, that will be permanent until changed. It's, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Ms. Graham.
Mr. Joe Holloway has made a very good point referencing the Right to Farm bill.
Right.
That law wasn't enacted by a previous county council a number of years ago, but it hasn't been all that long ago. It's been under this form of government, I think. I believe we're talking about some of each. I believe we're talking about some amendments to our zoning ordinance. I believe we're talking about some additions to the Right to Farm ordinance, and as Mr. Kilmer has indicated, tying these regulations to the tier maps. If you remember our previous discussions with our planning director. I believe we're talking about some additions to the Right to Farm ordinance. And as Mr. Kilmer has indicated, tying these regulations to the tier maps. If you remember our previous discussions with, with our planning director, the tier maps, comp plan, and zoning are all connected. So it could very easily, it could very easily be that once you, as a body, reach concurrence with what changes, and they're probably mostly distance-wise, setbacks and buffers are the kinds of things that seem to be coming back again and again and again as to what are, what is most needed to, to provide additional protection, and, and by protection is protection of the right to use one's property and protection to regards what, what else is going to be built in your neighborhood. Those are, those are zoning questions, and they can certainly be part of the legislation that we already have in, in Right to Farm. Your concern that our planning staff isn't present now, the council is still able to do, by this kind of discussion, still able to, to make progress with the areas that you think need to be covered, and then you give a pack, you give that package, or laundry list, if you will, to the staff and say, see what this would, see, see where this fits and where this should apply in, throughout the county through zoning, and come back to you with that.
Well, you're putting the cart before the horse. You're putting the cart before the horse.
Well, I'm not putting the cart before the horse, that I'm recognizing what can be accomplished with, with what we've got.
I found this section. Declaration of a nuisance, if the health officer determines that a nuisance exists, the health officer may declare the existence of a nuisance in determining whether a nuisance condition exists in connection with an agricultural operation. Health officers shall apply criteria provided in this chapter further. The health officer may consider the professional opinion of Wacomiko County Cooperative Extension Service, University of Maryland, and qualified experts. But there's more to it than that. But, you know, there's all many things in place.
Well, we're spinning our wheels, Joe. Again, I'm going to emphasize, we're spinning our wheels. And Bob, I'm going to reference you, because you are in the room. We need to have the planning director at the council table to discuss these issues in an open public forum. You know, in the entire, in the entire process where we've had an executive legislative form of government, which is going on now, you know, we're looking, going into 10th year, and I've been here for five of those years, I've never had an executive refuse to have a staff member attend a county council meeting, ever.
The issues being raised here are several. Zoning is way down the list. First issue to be concerned is the environment. We've requested that the Maryland Secretary of the Environment come to Wacomiko County for a public forum. Public health, we've requested the Secretary of Health to be here for a public forum. Agriculture, we've requested the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture to be here for a public forum. I would suggest that you're trying to legislate before you have the facts. And the Director of Planning can't provide you with those facts in those three areas. That isn't his job.
Oh, Mr. Strausberg, with all due respect, we met last week, the four of us, Mr. Kramer, you, me, and Bob.
And we.
And at that exact point in time, we discussed where the council was heading and what the executives' concerns were. And I explained to you at that time that the council was not looking at the health issues at this time. We were trying to review the zoning issues. And you can do it in one section at a time. Somerset County and Akimak County both addressed their zoning issues first, and their health issues second. And at that meeting a week ago, we were, we were all in agreement that, okay, that's fine, move forward.
That was not my recollection. I distinctly recall that we said that we're proceeding before we have the facts that we need in order to really astutely examine this issue. I sat here and I listened to the people's concerns who live in that area, and I heard those concerns. I live in Nutter's Crossing. There's a six-house farm that's one mile from my house. I, I understand their concerns. I understand their angst. I didn't hear them asking about zoning. I heard them asking about the environment. I heard them asking about the effects on public health. I heard them asking about whether or not there was an impact on the paleo channel. I don't think until we have information from the folks at the state level who have the required expertise to answer those concerns, that we should be considering legislation, particularly in a right to farm county.
Mr. Strausberg.
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just simply saying that I think.
No, but Mr. Strausberg, you're being misleading. The public also did specifically say they were worried about the proximity of the poultry houses to their residential homes and to the streets. Those were topics that came up as well. And Mr. Kramer, the discussion that we had last week, I mean, am I wrong in what, what I was, what I, what I got out of that meeting?
I don't think, I don't think you're wrong. I think when we left our discussion in Annapolis, we, the four of us, thought we were heading communally in the right direction. What, what's being said over here is part of, is part of the issue. What's being said over here is part of the issue. When you put it all together, you've got the issue.
Proximity of residences to the poultry farm have less to do with zoning and everything to do with health and the environment.
It's both. And I don't want to get into the semantics of that one either way. All I know is that what I think we're sort of glossing over here is the fact that the council would like to have a work session, period.
And.
The council has work sessions. We don't need, we need to have the work sessions. If we want to have the work sessions, whatever the topic might be, that is at our discretion. And we should have staff here to discuss that with us at any point in time. There's no way that staff should be obstructed or intimidating from attending a county council meeting, no matter what the differences might be between the executive branch and the, and the council.
I'll make one last comment, and then I'll cede to the executive. It's my responsibility to direct the activities of the executive administration. I do not believe at this particular time, Mr. Lennox or his staff have the expertise to address the real issues that are presented with this entire discussion. And that's for the executive and the director of administration to decide. That's our form of government. And until we have the information regarding ag, health, and the environment, we think it's premature to have our zoning director here talking about changes to our zoning regulations.
I've never once had Mr. Lennox at this table that couldn't answer any question that this council presented before him. And I think that's disingenuous to, to even make that assumption, that Jack Lennox may not know exactly how to address these concerns. He's very knowledgeable in this.
I've had the discussion, I had that discussion with him, and I respectfully disagree.
I have had that discussion with him as well, Mr. Strausberg.
Yeah, I am. I'd like to interrupt that conversation. It sounded like it was a little test. But anyway, John, I would like, you say that the health thing and the zoning are connected. These folks that came up a couple of weeks ago basically stated that it was because of the fans blowing things out into the air. So the setbacks, or whatever we set, keep those particles, I guess is what they were saying, from, their area of air, I suppose. So they are connected. Zoning and the health, their concerns over the health issue, which I don't agree with, I don't think is, I don't think are correct, but are kind of connected to, they're connected together.
Well, there's, there's no doubt that one impacts the other, but what I'm saying about the health ordinance is that I'm not, at this time, I'm not inclined to begin addressing health ordinances. I understand they're health issues, but I'm, I'm trying to address this as quickly as we can, because it's being requested that we address this as quickly as we can, in relation to what we can work with as far as distances, buffers, et cetera. As far as health ordinances, I'm not even ready to get into that area at this exact time.
That, that kind of bothers me, the part, as quickly as we can, because we're talking about the major industry in Wacomiko County, and East Shore. And to do something, something as quickly as we can affecting our largest industry is, I think, a little short-sighted. I think we need to take our time. Now, if you and the county executive don't agree on the way it's being approached, I can understand that. I probably wouldn't agree with them either, it's possible you're ceding. But anyway, I think we need to take our time with this. You know, number one industry here, the amount it affects, there's counties all over this country that would love to have what we have in this county, as far as the poultry industry, begging, begging for it.
I, I agree 100%.
And for us, and I know from what Mr. Wright said last week, I know from talking to the patron at Purdue, they are, they're in favor of us doing some kind of, setting some kind of ground rules as far as their best management practices go. And I understand they're in favor of that. I don't have a problem with that. And we need to do that. We need to have setbacks. We need to have buffers. But we need to find out what are the impacts, when, when, how is it going to affect? We, there's a lot of things in these graphs that we haven't discussed. One is, what happens if a permaculture farmer has a house, has a fire or wind damage to his poultry house and it blows down, burns up? There's nothing in any of these graphs there that addresses being able to replace those houses on the footprint. There's other issues.
That's what, that's what.
Land preservation that, you know, land preservation issues where, you know, can you, we have a setback, we're using example, 400 foot from every property lawn, or is there allowances for property lines from land preservation, or deed and right of ways, or dish right of ways? So doing something quickly here, I think, is, is the wrong approach. And I agree.
Well, you're taking that a little too literally. When I say quickly, what I'm saying is that I don't think we can sit here and stall for another month, another month, another month. I mean, we, we've been trying to move this forward for eight months, and, and we've been working in cooperation with the poultry industry. The regulations that we're working with as far as what are on the table, what, what has been presented for the most part in both of these bills to open up discussion, are , are standards that are accepted by the poultry industry. But where Wacomiko County is right now, even the poultry industry doesn't want those standards. And that's why I say we need to move forward. The 100 feet is a concern. Mr. Strausberg expressed his concern, the fact that he's living in Nutter's, and the poultry farms could be extremely close to that development. Well, the poultry industry doesn't want them that close to that development. The environmentalists don't want it that close to that development. The neighbors don't want it. And right now, tomorrow, it could be put that close to that development. And there's no law in Wacomiko County that says it can't be, until this council makes a decision to try to move forward in the most expedient fashion to get it on the books. It's not careless.
But, John, if those folks move to that, they sign that 100.
Joe, I understand that 100%.
They live in an ag district.
If, if this were negatively impacting the industry specifically, I'd be, I'd be a little more reserved in our measures. All I'm trying to do is to pass legislation that everyone agrees on, and everyone agrees on this, for the most part. All we have to do is kind of sort through the nuances of, of not tying ourselves up or not, you know, of unintended consequences. So that's the whole purpose of work sessions, to figure out the pros and cons and exactly what direction to go.
That's one good reason I brought up time into our Right to Farm bill. I think that would be.
Well, I would like, I would like law to tell us that. It's good. We need to know how it plays into the Right to Farm Act, whether, whether it's legislative bill. And I don't think it would be part of the tier maps in particular, but there would probably be reference to it, to the tier maps, in either the legislative bill or an amendment to the Right to Farm Act. Would you think?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I think I'd like to endorse Holloway's middle, middle way here. Yeah, I mean, we're not going to, we can't wrestle with this anyways. I mean, this has to go through the planning commission. This has to, you know, legislative bills have their own timeline. No matter what we do, it's going to take months, anyway. I do think that having some expertise from staff wouldn't hurt us in terms of making the right choice, but, I mean, we, we do have to make sure we get it right. And, I mean, agriculture, you know, is moving towards these larger chicken houses, and maybe our rules need to be updated to reflect that. But, you know, we're not going to ban these large chicken houses. I don't think there's any movement on the council to do that. You know, there's, you know, the, the health issues are handled by state law mostly, and that's, I appreciate that the executive is trying to get people from the state to, down here, to discuss those issues, in particular, how they, how they apply to this county. I mean, I've read the information that a variety of interested people have sent about the impact of CAFOs and things like that. And talking about CAFOs generally, and then what CAFOs can exist in Wacomiko County under state laws and regulation in terms of manure disposal and runoff are two separate issues. And those, those things, there does need to be a public airing of the facts on the ground of how it impacts Wacomiko County. So I, I think there's more room for cooperation than is maybe evident over the last 15 minutes or so. But, I mean, it, we do have to, I mean, I think Joe was right. We have, we have to be deliberate here and make sure we get it right. Because if this is a legislative bill, if this is legislation that changes our code, I mean, it's in the code. I mean, that's, you know, Rachel, you know, that's what people look to. We have to get this right.
At what point in time do you think that Lennox would be able to be prepared to address the council for this? Wayne?
What would you like him to address?
You say they're going to meet with the county or the state, individual state folks? Will that happen?
We called the governor's office again this morning to encourage that as soon as it can happen.
Are we looking in a week or two, maybe, hopefully?
Probably find out tomorrow. We'll probably be with, with Ms. Hattaway tomorrow up in Harford County. But to, to the extent that the questions are planning and zoning questions, we're happy to answer them. But, but, but I think what we're addressing here is the entire direction of an industry and a fundamental change in that industry. And there are, there have been assertions made that there are very detrimental health impacts, very detrimental environmental impacts. And I think that before we take a half step, we have to consider what the facts are on the ground, so that when we make our decisions, when we adopt new regulations and/or new zoning requirements, that we do so within the context of what people with the expertise to make those judgments have to say. And the Maryland State Department of Health is assigned the responsibility of protecting our health. We should be taking our lead from them. The Maryland Department of the Environment is charged with protecting the environment. The Maryland Department of Agriculture probably understands CAFOs better than anybody in this room. So what we're urging is careful, deliberate gathering of the true facts on the ground so that what we come up with makes sense for Wacomiko County.
Okay. Will this meeting be open to the public or to the council members?
It, it would, we contemplate it being an open public forum, probably at the civic center. I'd have to make those arrangements.
Let me ask you this. What happens when somebody comes for a permit for a large chicken house development in Wacomiko County, let's say, in two weeks?
By right.
They come to the council with everything in order?
By right, they can do that. And if they come in two weeks, you passing legislation isn't going to change that.
All right, forget two weeks. Let's just say.
Okay.
Let's just say two months.
I'm simply saying that by, by law, and this is where we have to be very careful, by law, I read the newspaper article over the weekend, I've followed this very closely, and someone made the comment that, well, no one's told me that the, these people have the right to do what they're doing. They absolutely do have the right to do what they're doing. They absolutely have a legal right to do what they're doing. And I think we need to be very careful with how quickly we move ahead with depriving people of their property rights without full knowledge of the different areas that we have to understand before we do that, before we contemplate doing it.
That needs, that needs a real qualifier there. We are not suggesting compromising anybody's property rights under any circumstances. And we've had a letter of support from the Farm Bureau, who would be the people most impacted by property rights, and they, they have given their support of us moving forward with some type of legislation. I don't want, I don't want to go down that route again.
And it's also interesting that a lot of this research has been done by other counties like Somerset County and like Akimak County, a year, eight months, a year, six months. Even DPI came out with their best management practice in June of last year, didn't present it to us until December. And, and we're not acting quickly on this. We're acting very slowly. It's a knee-jerk reaction because the CAFOs have come in now, and they're making an impact on our farming community, and two years ago, we never even. on our farming community, and two years ago, we never even knew what they were.
We've had CAFOs in this county for years.
We have had them, but the public has not been aware of the impact that they've had. Now, all of a sudden...
John, you're referencing the larger, the larger ones.
The larger chicken processing.
I gave Mr. Kramer the Maryland Department of the Environment FAQ on CAFOs. CAFOs defined as the confinement, uh, with poultry of 37,500 birds. Legislation that I read this morning defined it as 200 birds. Now, tell me...
What legislation?
The legislation that was in the packet.
You're talking about the, the council has?
Yeah.
That's not legislation. It's nothing but draft.
Draft legislation, so we're taking it...
It's a draft measure, it's a work session measure. It's just in no way on the table...
So, so we're proposing, to John's point, we're proposing, you're saying that we're not changing people's property rights, but in draft legislation, we're defining a CAFO for poultry purposes as 200 birds as opposed to 37,500 birds?
Wayne, look, I don't want, this is not, this is not the, the, the time to, I think, try to incite people on whether or not this council's moving forward to, to compromise property rights. I'm going to emphasize it again. This is nothing but an arbitrary document for the council to start with. It is not a proposal from this council as to how we want to move forward. It is a document to work with, so I think that needs to be very clear. I don't want to mislead the public.
I'm not trying to incite anyone or mislead anyone.
You're insinuating that we're...
No, I'm not. I'm saying we don't have the facts that we need from the state agencies.
No, excuse me, Wayne, you insinuated that we were trying to compromise property rights. I don't want to get away from that.
And you will, and you will...
We are not. It is a work session. We haven't even started this yet.
What you're contemplating is changing the rights of ag owners. Even with setbacks, you're still compromising their property rights.
We've had those discussions. As I said, the Farm Bureau, Charles Wright came here the other night, along with all the other people, and Charles Wright handed a copy, which is also in this packet, I'm sure you've read it, where they were in agreement with where we were trying to go, where we were trying to move forward. They did not say that we were trying to compromise property rights.
Didn't say anything about distance from a residential area.
This is a work session. These are work documents, Wayne. These are items that we're probably will strike from this, this draft.
And what I'm suggesting to you, as best I can, is that I think we need to have further facts so that when we consider what it is that we want to do, and I'm not, I'm the last person who's going to say that I don't hear the concerns of the residents. What I'm saying is that we need to separate fact from assertions that aren't necessarily, uh, true, and I think Councilman Kilmer made a comment, uh, in council comments at the end of the public hearing, that there had been assertions made that were not factual. We're just trying to gather facts as best we can before we consider legislation.
That's exactly what this council's trying to do as well. We're not, you know, you're saying considering legislation. We're not really considering legislation. We're, we're trying to put facts to it. We're trying to draw up some, some conclusions on our own. We're trying to move forward with the process as well. There's no legislation that's been introduced. This is, these are work sessions that we're talking about.
And I'll circle back, and I'll circle back by saying that the Director of Planning and Zoning is not the person from whom we can get the facts, the fundamental facts that we need right now on health, the environment, and agricultural practices. There are experts that are available to us who we should hear before we then move to the next stage. We're not, we're not at all proposing dragging our feet. We're proposing a good factual foundation before we move forward.
So, so are we.
Well, I mean, I mean, the process of changing zoning laws, I mean, is going to take months anyway, so hopefully, um, any, you know, even if we would start tonight, or today, it's not night yet, but, uh, this afternoon, doing anything, which we're not, you know, has to do with planning and zoning, has to go through the public comment period. I mean, so, the hope would be that, I'm sure you guys are moving quickly in terms of getting these public meetings together. This can all take place at the same time. Again, I, I don't know that there is necessarily a reason to be, and I don't think we're at odds here, so, that's...
Oh, you're right, Mark. We wouldn't be at odds. Uh, both of these things can be done at the same time. The council, work sessions, don't have to wait until someone from the state of Maryland comes down and talks to, uh, the public, the public in general, as far as, you know, what their take is, whether it's the environment, whether it's agriculture, no matter what the topic might be. Both can be done at the exact same time, which is, and we're both supposed to be heading in the exact same direction. Again, what, what is absolutely, um, what is absolutely, I think, egregious is the fact that we have staff members that have been instructed not to come and discuss this topic with the county council, period. I don't care if we're talking about chicken houses or chicken soup. If the council requests a staff member to be here, and again, we're all paid by tax dollars, to address public concerns, let Jack come to the table, let us draw a conclusion that Jack may not be as knowledgeable as an individual as we need here to address these concerns, but I don't think that's going to happen. I think we'll get quite a lot of information from Mr. Lennox, and that's all we're doing, is that we're requesting that Mr. Lennox come here so that we can have a discussion, period. It's that simple. And we're all going in the same direction, I know we are, but we're getting stoneballed here. It's an obstruction, and I, I, you know, not just me personally, I think it's, um, it's an affront to the council as a whole for something like this to be, uh, to be done. So, um, that being said, um, we've gone on longer than I want to, and we haven't accomplished much of anything. Um, the only thing I could say is it'll be on the agenda the next meeting. We would like to have Mr. Lennox appear so that we can at least review what the options are. If Mr. Lennox wants to tell us he's unaware of these, these, uh, these matters, that's fine. I'm okay with that. But I would not, you know, I would not want the discussion to be compromised in any way through any, you know, any other actions.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Hang on a second. Hang on, Joe. And Rachel, you will...
Mr. Cannon.
Rachel, you review the, the...
Right to Farm Act.
The differences as to maybe what the best approach might be?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Don?
Yeah, I was just going to make a suggestion. If, um, you have any more meetings with, um, the executive, maybe one or two more council members should attend and...
Well, this was an impromptu, where the executive requested that Matt and I meet with them after the MAKO, uh, after a MAKO session, and so we were there, and, um, at, and that's the discussion that we had. Their concern was that, uh, we were, um, we were moving too forward, and I said, hey, guys, we're not interested in the health ordinances. We're, now, we're just trying to look at, you know, what the, uh, what the zoning restrictions might be and, um, those, those type of regulations.
And, and I agree that we need to move forward. Um, it is a knee-jerk reaction, and everyone that has spoken has made good points. I'm anxious to see the secretaries. Um, and I know this isn't going to happen today, and I don't think that's the president's intent, um, but I think we need to have more work sessions, and I don't think we need to meet, meeting to meeting, maybe set up a couple more work sessions throughout the month so that we can be thorough with this, and not everybody has to attend if they can't, but we need to have more input on this, and, and we need to do the right thing, because there's a lot of people depending on us to make the right decision, and I think we're going to eventually.
Right. Thank you, Councilman Don. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, so that we can go into a closed work session. Entertaining motion to adjourn so we can go to a closed session.
So moved.
Second?
I'll take a second, so move whatever.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting's adjourned. Uh, we will take a, a half-hour recess if we could before we get into the closed session. Uh, Mr. Roser, as, do you think that what you have to discuss...